This conference will now be recorded.
January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. So with that, we'll rise and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I would take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Maggie, moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Sean seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess.
Roll call.
Yeah, we've got to do a roll call, so I'll start with Rick this week. Rick?
Hi.
Sean?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
And Maggie?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, item number one on the agenda. Highway nineteen reconstruct project, it looks like there's some change orders.
I'll go ahead and jump in then, I'm assuming I can be, you can hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Well, mayor, members of the city council, I don't want to be known as the change order king, but this is part of the housekeeping process of taking care of a large project like this. Before you is consideration of the agenda for modification of the construction contract, naming it as change orders eight through eleven. The number of change orders is really just to help facilitate now some of the breakup of the different items are being paid for with the different funding sources. The first three change orders, eight, nine, and ten, all have to do with additional traffic control signage. Number eight was actually for what we're calling seasonal traffic control. If you recall, we originally got wind into this contract looking at this to be a one-season project, obviously with the later bid and rebid, or delaying the bid, and then obviously issues with the railroad. This obviously became a two-season project, and with that was the need for some interim seasonal traffic control over the winter that had not have been accounted for, obviously, in the first design. So change order number eight is for forty-four hundred dollars. Most of that is being covered by MINDOT. There's a share of a thousand dollars on that that's actually being covered for the yellow barrels to protect all the lighting bases that were completed last fall. Change order nine and ten are literally just traffic control items that were added, in fact, added in the beginning of the project, but we just didn't receive the invoices until later on. There was no question about the items that needed to be done, or the cost to them. It's just that they had not been invoiced by the subcontractor. Change order number nine, where items again requested by the MINDOT and city team, and with the cost is proposed to be apportioned evenly by basically the portioned cost on the project. Change order ten was ones where we provided very proprietary signs. If you recall, they're out down on Truck Highway twenty-one. Because access was really difficult west of the tracks, we added signs that specifically named the meat market, the liquor store, the depot, because those are sites that were going to be very difficult to access with not real defined streets in that area. MINDOT, under the cooperative agreement, did not agree to pay for signs that named specific businesses. So this was an item that kind of falls on the city side of the ledger, but I should point out that it's being funded by, the majority of it is being funded by the the federal grant that the city obtained, which is like an eighty-twenty split. So it's either being funded by the federal money or twenty percent from state aid, the same state aid that I shared everybody, shared with everybody last council meeting. Change order eleven is a fairly significant one. This is related to the extra costs that the contractor incurred related to the timber obstructions that were hit during the tunnel crossing under the railroad. There's photos of that, I think that's in your packet as well, where you can see that. The vast majority of this cost is being covered by MINDOT, although MINDOT did request that the city cover ten percent of that cost because of the benefit the city got from that casing. As you can see in the photo to the right, what you can see kind of what looks like a little spider, octopus legs or tentacles coming out from that pipe. And what it was is there's the void space between the casing and the pipe that we're, they were able to utilize that to feed the electrical lighting conduit through on that casing. As it turned out, because of that timber obstruction, the electric conduit casing was not going to be able to be installed also under the railroad without having difficulties and higher costs. I will be coming probably at the next council meeting with another change order for the costs incurred related to the electric conduit. But ultimately, this ended up was a total savings to the project and the total savings to the city side of the ledger. Again, the city side of the ledger that's being funded by the federal, that federal grant. So in the end, they love to get electric lines across the railroad. It's going to be about half the cost than it originally ended up, and that was due to some pretty quick thinking and innovation on terms of the contractor coming up with this option to place this conduit instead of the storm casing. Well, again, with that, with the original installation of that storm casing, that was additional cost to the contractor. This change order eleven was reviewed multiple times, some back and forth between contractor and MINDOT, and ultimately decided on that eighty thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and ten cents, with ten percent of that being covered on the city side of the ledger, which again is federal, federal funds and state aid funds to cover that. Any questions on that? Kind of a whirlwind of comments there?
I realize it's just bookkeeping, Chris, but the railroad doesn't pay anything for the ties that were buried underneath there at all, huh?
No, and those were probably been sitting there since sometime in the eighteen hundreds. And so it's actually what they call corduroy construction. It was a way for them to bridge the, some poor soils in that area when they built the railroad, and they've been there probably ever since, though. Yeah, railroad doesn't assume responsibility for anything.
Any other discussion on this change order, on these change orders? Hearing none, I would take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Rick Seiler moved. Is there a second?
This is Maggie, I'll second.
Okay, Maggie is second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Rick? Mr. Ryan, Sean? Bruce?
Aye.
And Maggie?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, next up on the agenda is to authorize for a two thousand and twenty-one UTV. Glenn, looks like you're up.
Good evening, everybody. As most of you probably remember from budget time, except for the mayor, this was talked about in budget time, this UTV would be purchased and split between two different departments, being storm water and the street department. The UTV would be used to maintain areas around the ponds that we can't get through with any other equipment, to do weed spraying, to do, cut down wild trees that are growing, clean out inlet, outlets, take care of drain tile, things like that. Be also used on the street, one example is before we do any seal coating, we spray the weeds that are coming up in the roadway between the curb line and the asphalt and kill those before it's seal coated, so that that seals it better at those joints. So as it was talked about at budget time, there's thirteen thousand dollars budgeted total, sixty-five hundred between the, for each department, sixty-five hundred for storm, sixty-five hundred for streets. We did get prices for two different vehicles, one being a Gator, John Deere Gator from Kimbo Equipment, for eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-four cents. The other one's a Kubota from Lonno Equipment out of Shakopee for twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars. It's a staff recommendation that we purchased the Kubota. Couple of the key reasons are is the Kubota has more horsepower. It's a hydrostatic drive instead of a belt drive, like the Gators, the Gator is a belt drive. There's a little more ground clearance on the Kubota, and the box is a hydraulic lift or hydraulic dump compared to somebody needing to manually lift it up to dump it out. So the Kubota is a little more money. Fire Department has a Kubota like this, same model, the difference is theirs has tracks, and they use that for putting out grass fires and to get to areas that they can't get to or anything else. So, and they, at this point, like theirs, Kubota's been around a long time. We've had a number of Kubotas in the Parks Department. They're a proven machine, it's not something that's new. So again, it's staff recommendation that we purchase, authorize the purchase of the two thousand and twenty-one Kubota for twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I think he just liked the colors, black and, black and red.
Black and red, yep. There you go.
Any other questions of Glenn? Otherwise, I would take a motion to approve.
So moved.
And that was Sean?
Sean, yeah.
Okay, second?
Second.
And Rick seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Rick?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Jerick? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the third item, yep. Oh, if that's, somebody said something. The third item is the residential lease agreement for two zero eight Central Avenue North.
Thank you, mayor, and as the council recalls, we had discussion and a preliminary review on this draft lease at the January fifth meeting. Following that, I met with the city attorney and went through the document, and we made some minor changes in sections three A, four A, four J, five A, and ten. And so the document you have back in front of you is acceptable to both the city attorney Scott Riggs and city staff, and so we have it in front of you for your final, you win approval here tonight.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I would take a motion to approve the residential lease agreement for two thousand and eight Central Avenue North.
Is Bruce, I make motion?
Okay, Bruce made the motion. Is there a second?
This is Maggie, I'll second.
Okay, Maggie seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Sean? Or Rick, I'm sorry. Rick and Sean, okay. Bruce?
Aye.
And Maggie?
Aye.
And Jerick votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, number four, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, mayor, that this one is one that the council is fairly familiar with, that we do this on an annual basis, as required by Minnesota statutes, is that the city shall have three designated municipal representatives that serve as trustees on the New Prague Volunteer Fireman's Relief Association. I put some general information in your packet on the Volunteer Fire Relief Association governance and the copy of the statute regarding the Board of Trustees. For the relief, for the Relief Association, they're supposed to have nine trustees, six of whom come from the fire department, the other three are municipal representatives. And under the statutes, we're supposed to have one elected municipal official, and in our case, historically, that's generally been the mayor. Then the second choice is either an elected or an appointed municipal official. And historically, prior to my arrival and since I've been here, it's been myself in my capacity as city administrator. And then the third one, the chief of the municipal fire department, obviously, that is now Steve Rinda. So unless the council has other thoughts, should be an action to simply appoint the mayor, the city administrator, and the fire chief as the city's designated municipal representatives to the New Prague Volunteer Fireman's Relief Association Board of Trustees for two thousand and twenty-one. We're anticipating that their first meeting is going to be February?
Sixteenth, I think.
Correct, I was just double checking to make sure it's the sixteenth. At eight P M. is when we're supposed to have the first Relief Association meeting in, as far as what's up and coming. So your action tonight is to review and appoint the three designated municipal representatives to the Board of Trustees on behalf of the city.
Dwayne, do you want to do that?
That'd be fine with me.
Oh, it is, okay. Mike, do you want to do it? Because I don't have a problem doing it.
Well, it helps to do it from my perspective and to be aware of what's occurring so that I can take a look at what's happening within the trust and the overall financial part of the Relief Association, so that when we get that form in late June, early July, that I've got a pretty good idea as to what's happening on that financial front as I bring that set of recommendations to you.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure you guys wanted to do it.
It, it doesn't involve a lot of work typically, at most, it's one meeting, sometimes maybe two over the course of the year, so it's not anything that strains from a meeting standpoint.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I would take a motion to appoint the municipal trustees to the New Prague Volunteer Fireman's Relief Association, the mayor, city administrator, and the fire chief.
So moved.
And I'll second.
And that? Okay, Maggie seconded, but I didn't catch you. Sean?
Yes.
That was you. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm in the mood.
The motion's made. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Rick?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Maggie?
Aye.
And Jerick votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're down to number five. I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda. If there's no questions?
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second is Bruce.
Okay, Bruce made the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Rick?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Maggie?
Aye.
And Jerick votes aye. Okay, we're down to miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything for miscellaneous?
Yeah, Glenn, you, can you tell me and remind me who's responsible for keeping sidewalks around the railroad crossings clean?
Well, it's supposed to be the railroad. But the way it looks, that's probably not going to happen. So it might start to be us.
Well, I don't understand whose responsibility is it actually in writing. I mean, it's got to be somebody's responsibility.
There's nothing in writing that I'm aware of, and I don't, you'd ever get the railroad to agree to anything like that. Back in the day when the railroad was running through town more often, that was never an issue because they used to always clean their driveway going into depot off of Main Street, so it always seemed to get cleaned out. But now, those, those, it doesn't seem like you see a train go through much at all, and I'm sure that there's not much activity around that depot, so. I noticed it the other day, and I'm thinking that's probably just going to be the quickest and best way to handle that situation is just have Parks Department come from the park there behind the casings and just run down a little farther and clean that off.
Yeah, if they would do that, or if, even if they were to just do Main Street, it would be, it would at least not stop me from getting to the other side of town. I mean, I haven't been over there now since it snowed, so.
Right, okay, yeah. I'll talk to the supervisor.
Either I get telephone numbers from you, or I just start rattling your cage, so one of the two.
Yeah, well, I can give you telephone numbers, but unfortunately, I don't know that you'll have any success because we have a hard time talking to anybody.
All right, well, thank you for that.
Mike? Mike?
Technically, under the ordinances that the council's adopted, it is the property owner's responsibility to take care of the sidewalk adjacent to their property. So as Glenn was trying to identify, technically, that's the railroad's responsibility. But just as we try to chase them to, to get weeds taken care of, we likely would run into the same matter that we can prepare a notice and just send it out, but we'll wait for weeks before we get any response, if we get any. And so the, the challenges Glenn just was describing, we just may have to pick that up and try to do that when we're coming off the trails, like you said, near Case.
But with that being said, I mean, why, can't we just do it and then bill them? And send them a bill and, and they just end up owing us money, I know, but.
Rick, we can bill them, and we've billed them for mowing, but pretty hit or miss if they'll pay it, and we cannot assess them because they don't technically have parcels that are accessible per the county, so we're kind of in a catch twenty-two there with them.
Yeah, it's tough to get them to respond to anything.
Well, if I'm the only one that complained, Glenn, you know, just at least one path would be perfect.
Well, like I said, I noticed it the other day, and unfortunately, I didn't jump on it, but looks like that's what's happening now, the railroad's just not, the depot's not being used like it used to, so it's not being cleaned. So it's just be the fastest and easiest way for everybody involved that walks that way or needs that way to get through, if we just jump over there and do it.
Thank you.
Yep. Bruce? Did you have something?
Yes, I have two things, if I could. The change order reminded me of, and the directional signage issue reminded me that we're, even though it's only January, we're starting to look ahead to the Main Street project this year and thinking about the marketing committee. If anyone has any ideas or any complaints or anything that we, that we could look at or should be looking at to do better this, next year than we did last year with it, it was kind of a dry run with the work that we did so far. But next year, obviously, we're encompassing a lot, much larger stretch of Main Street, affecting many more businesses, so if anyone has any other suggestions as far as helping the businesses or marketing in a different way, or any particular complaints that we should do things better next year than we did last year, let me know, because I'm assuming in the next month or so, we'll regroup that committee and look at their promotional activities again, but signage is a big deal with that. And if we learned anything last year, I'd like to make sure that we're implementing anything we learned for next year. So if anybody has any thoughts in that area or anything we should be looking at, please let me know on that. That's going to come around pretty quick again, that we start construction, I'm assuming, April or May again. Secondly, I'm not sure who institutes our planning meeting that we've had in the past, but if we could talk about if we're going to do that again, if we're going to have a workshop on that, that maybe we could schedule something in or look at scheduling something in, so we have a little bit of a... So we don't put that off in my mind, put it off too long into March or April, maybe February would be better. But I guess I open that up to questions or what everyone thinks we should be doing there. But I would appreciate a workshop meeting and talking about what we want to achieve this year.
Bruce, just from my standpoint is, I've been working with Dwayne, is, that's on the docket here to try to see if we can't get done and put together either for late February or early March.
Okay, that sounds great if you could give us dates, dates then.
Okay. Anybody else? Need, anything for the good of the order? Otherwise, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, city, city hall was open again today, that we're open for business, that people are welcome to come in, and hopefully, things stay on the straight and narrow, and, you know, we're, everybody's doing well at city hall and, you know, ready to continue to deal with service delivery and interaction with the public. And so people were finding us today, and so it's good to see some customers again.
That it is.
When can we move our meetings back into council chambers?
Well, they're still not necessarily recommending, if you remember from the last discussion when we had with Scott, that there is not necessarily a recommendation to do that at this time. And then the challenge is, is as we talked, when we took a look at how we want to try to take a look at doing these meetings, is that, you know, trying to figure out how to incorporate the face-to-face meetings as well as involving the electronic and having that work from a remote standpoint. That's where we tried to come to you to ask about new technology equipment to make that happen, that it, from those that I've watched, I watched the city of Jordan, and it's somewhat difficult to record the ongoing meeting and then to try to have an interactive role with an electronic meeting with the in-house meeting. We don't have room necessarily to maintain the six-foot separation up at the Council dais. We would probably, I would recommend that we keep staff out and only bring in the staff when they're needed. We would have to, in the audience, pull out all of the chairs and go to complete six-foot separation. So it's a matter of how we integrate the in-person meeting with the electronic meeting. And, you know, we haven't had an awful lot of public participation, but there are those I know that enjoy being able to, to just watch and see what's going on and not necessarily have to attend, and so it's a matter of trying to put that together. Ken, I don't know if you have anything from all the research you did in trying to figure out how to make this kind of work, but there are challenges, at least with the equipment that we have.
Yeah, in my opinion, we would not be able to integrate an online presence with in-person live meeting without that equipment that I presented back in December. Very similar to what Scott County has, same vendor and everything.
I think there's plenty of city councils all over the state of Minnesota that are meeting in person, and as far as the dais, you know, we could only have three up there, two could sit off to the side. You know, again, we could space the, space the people out in the audience, six feet. And I fully understand if some city staff don't really need to be at the meeting or want to come in one at a time and don't have to necessarily sit there. We could group their segments together, they could come in, speak. They could come in, speak, they could leave, another city staff member could come in, discuss the issues that they need to discuss, and we could just there, there's plenty of room to social distance, even with Patrick there and Mitch filming the meeting. I'm just kind of curious, I'd like to find out what the other council says, because I'd like to get back into face-to-face.
I know, I know Bell Plain has dividers in between their council members at the desk. See-through dividers or whatever. But I know that they have technology that they can integrate online also within person. And I don't know what that all entails, but but yeah, I definitely would like to get there sooner than later.
Bruce, Maggie, Rick?
Yeah, so is McKinnon.
Yeah, I, I think it's important to meet in person. And I'm just wondering if we each have a laptop, if we're able to have that at the, at the dais and then be on go-to meeting through the computer, the public could connect via go-to meeting as well as maybe some of the city staff that doesn't want to come in person. But yet, the council can be in person. I don't, that technology.
Sorry, the issue with that, Maggie, is you'll get feedback from one laptop to another, and you'll get delay and echo. And then the other problem with that is any public comment, if you ever took any online, would not be on the recorded version with the camera in the council room. It wouldn't be integrated. So that would be a interesting wrinkle into our system and what we're posting for a recorded meeting. Would you record, you know, what you have on go-to meeting, or would you record what Mitch is recording, or would you have both? I don't know, I don't know the, how that would necessarily work together.
Well, I think you got direction. I haven't heard from Bruce yet, but it sounds like there's four people that'd like to get back in there sooner than later. I'd like maybe you guys to explore that possibility. But Bruce, what is your feeling?
Thank you. It's, that's one of the challenges with the system. It's kind of hard to communicate sometimes, hard to know when you're next in line for the dance. I certainly would like to meet in person too, but we're, my feeling is we're so close to getting a high percentage of vaccinations during the next few months. I'm assuming by summer, I'm hoping by summer, most of us here that want to get vaccinated would be vaccinated. So I think the risks are going to go down considerably. So I would certainly like to meet sooner than later, but at the same time, we're, I think this has been adequate. And I think it'd be adequate for the next few months. That's my opinion.
Okay.
I'll see what, I guess, see what we can find out, Ken, and I guess I wasn't about technology, I wasn't part of those discussions, so.
Well, what, what I'm telling you is, I don't believe there's a way you can do anything but only in person without buying that equipment.
Yeah, and I don't know what that.
We can do that, but we would have no online presence for people to remote in.
Ken, do you think Bell Plain is the same equipment?
That
I don't know.
The system we looked at doing is probably very similar, yeah, to what we had shown you guys before.
So we're worried more about the people that want to attend the meeting, Ken, is that what you're saying, is that, and we couldn't, they couldn't come in and sit six feet apart? We must still be able to, have we ever measured the space and found out how many people we could accommodate?
No.
I understand the dais, we could put the mayor in the middle and two people on one end, and then two other council people six feet away, sitting off to the side. You know, and then we can certainly social distance, well, I mean, I don't know how you guys are social distancing. If you're all back in the, in the office now and City Hall's open up, you must be interacting together in some type of fashion anyways. So even whether we can space you guys six feet apart at opposite ends of the table, it just seems like it's doable, and it just and if people want to come in and either sit and watch it or, or participate in it, I'm sure there's an equitable way that we could do that. We could probably handle, I'm going to guess, at least 15 people, and I can only think in my 10 years on the council, there's only been a handful of more than 15 people at any one time. And, and usually that consisted of someone like Mayo coming in with four or five people, and the ambulance people coming in with four or five people all to speak. We could limit that just to one, one could articulate their, their position. We don't need a whole big group. I just think there's a way to do it, and I'd really like to do the face-to-face. And I think if I hear Rick and Maggie and even Dwayne for a certain point, that, you know, that's the majority of the council. I, I'm just asking to explore it. Could you kind of lay it out? Just see if there's a a way that we could safely do that?
There would be no technology component, but I'm sure we can figure out how many people could fit in there.
Are you saying that Mitch wouldn't want to come back and?
No, 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 we could do that, but like I had presented before, we are woefully behind on technology for recording meetings compared to all the other cities in the county already. So I just want to make that final statement for that, that I think we need to do that regardless of COVID. But yes, we can go back to what we were doing.
Gotcha.
Ken or Mike, do you, is it, is it required that they're, they're recorded?
No. Just minutes taken, right?
Okay.
We'll certainly put that on for the staff meeting discussion and see how we can lay that out and what the issues and challenges are. But in all likelihood, it could come back that if we're trying to integrate both in-person and online, that that may require a technology upgrade to be able to integrate the two so that it functionally provides a recording that enables participation from either location into that recorded meeting.
Okay.
I don't know that, I don't know that that should be a priority, because when we were in, in chambers, the doors are open to the public, you know, granted Mitch was recording, but that was for afterplay. And we, we weren't connecting with the public electronically. So if we're back in chambers, we social distance, and the public wants to attend, they can certainly attend up to what our capacity is in chambers. So I, I don't know why, it seems to me that we're trying to fundamentally change the way our meetings going forward might be handled because we can't technology-wise connect the public to us while we're in chambers. And that didn't happen before anyway.
No, it, it comes down to, with the change of going to this new meeting electronically, the question becomes, is that something viable that you should be offering and making available to the public? And if it is, the question is, is how do we integrate the two systems to effectively be able to communicate with the public?
They can certainly show up like they have in the past. I'm, I'm fine with just having that option available for them. And they can certainly send a letter and an email which get read into the minutes as well. You know, I, to be perfectly honest, I don't want to have a live meeting like this where we have 40 people all showing up and wanting to speak and extending our meetings to four hours. I'd just rather get a synopsis of a brief email or a letter sent in, whatever else.
I guess when I was thinking about remoting in, that was more for like Mr. Cavett or, or our city attorney, that we'd have the ability to talk to them through, through technology without you know, paying, let's say, drive time from when he leaves Minneapolis to when he returns back to Minneapolis. That's what I was kind of thinking about people remoting in, was more for our vendors or our people that we rely on.
Well, that's a good point.
We'll put this on.
One of the things that, one of the things that I would be worried about too, is that if we start, start doing it, and then we get an order from the governor, and we got to quit again right away, so, I don't know, I would think that we're still, I would a couple of weeks at least would be even thinking about how to do this.
Yep.
We'll put it back on for staff discussion and try to have something to you at the next meeting or so.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And Mike.
Thanks for bringing up Sean.
Thanks.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sean?
I'll second.
And Maggie seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not going to call the roll on that one. Okay, motion carries. And good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Hey, Mike, we made it. Mike and I had a bet.